Do we have a clergy member with us? Is Bishop Coleman on, on the line?
I don't see them.
No, neither. I see one, see one random user that I think that's a.
That's Dave Lucas Communications.
Okay. Well, you all don't mind, um, we will pause for Bishop Raymond Coleman from the Remnant Recovery Church was supposed to join us this evening. And we will pause in a moment of silent prayer and reflection and then stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
To allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The republic for which it stands, one nation, undergone.
The God indivisible. Who reclaims justice for all.
Roll call please.
Larry.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Rist.
She texted me that she's trying to log on, Marta, so if you don't mind just keeping an eye for attendance on, on the, um, people present over there. She's having trouble with her BlueJeans app, so. Next on our agenda are the meeting minutes for the Strategic Planning Committee meeting of January fourteenth. The Finance Committee meeting minutes of January fourteenth. The joint meeting of the City Council and the upper township trustees from January fourteenth. And the regular council meeting minutes of January fourteenth. There any errors, omissions, additions to those minutes? That's the one thing I'll note in our council agenda, it says the Strategic Planning Committee meeting minutes of January fourteenth. It was actually on the twelfth. Um, just make that note in your packets. It's correct on the meeting minutes, but it's on the approval of minutes incorrect. Any others? Hearing none, those meeting minutes will stand as approved. Next, we have audience participation. And before we get to audience participation, um, the mayor, the mayor submitted to me the, um, a letter which will make part of the minutes for next time I'll leave for Marta. For his, um, official request for reappointment of Mark Dickas to the Ironton Income Tax Review Board. Which we, which the mayor appoints one and council appoints two. So his request is in writing, I would entertain a motion to, um, to accept this nomination. Chris, I see you on my screen.
I'd like you most to accept the recommendation of Mark Dickas.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion about that? The Tax Review Board, any, anybody need clarification? Cause we'll have to make a, we'll have to make two recommendations and I know Mr. Klein's prepared to do so, so, um. Roll call please.
Larry.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Klein. Pierce.
Aye. Aye.
The mayor's request for reappointment for Mark Dickas to the Ironton Income Tax Review Board is accepted. Nate.
Rick, I'd like to make, uh, two nominations separately to fill for the councils. Uh, I know I didn't have discussion, but on the previous, but I just want to note that, uh, these are unpaid, uh, positions. And that's just to review tax, um, tax appeals. Um, and as far as talking Becky Waggins, that has not happened in the last two years. Uh, so I'd like to nominate for reaport, reappointment, uh, Brad McFann. To the Ironton Income Tax Repeals Board.
Chris.
You make as a motion.
I'll second Bob's motion.
It was Nate, it was Nate's motion, but Bob, I think.
Yeah.
Were you, were you asking a question, Bob?
I was just didn't know, I didn't catch if Nate made that as a motion.
Yes.
Or not, that's all, okay, we're good.
Roll call please.
Larry.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Or the Beth that's in there now, I think, if you want to call her name, if she heard that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I had a hard time getting it. Um, is this the police ordinance?
No, it's, it's reappointment, sorry Beth, it's reappointment of Brad McFann to the Ironton Tax Review Board.
Okay, fine.
Nate.
I'd like to make a motion for reappointment of Aaron Hyten for the Ironton Income Tax Review Board.
I'll second that motion for Aaron Hyten.
Bob?
Yes.
Roll call please.
Larry.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Rist.
Aye.
The nomination for Aaron Hyten is accepted for the Ironton Income Tax Review Board. Congratulations to Mr. McFann, Mr. Hyten and Mr. Dickas for being on the Ironton Income Tax Review Board. Other audience participation this evening? Remember, I can't see all of you. I can see Mr. Pierce has got his hand up. Go ahead, Mike.
Great, all set. I've got one after Mike.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Um, I had Caitlin Noor, the art teacher at Ironton High School, contact me. Uh, concerning the art at the Brumberg Building. Uh, some students have asked about their art and they might want it back. Uh, and others just want to know, uh, what's going to be done with it, if anything, and, and some information about that. And she wants to know, uh, who she can contact or communicate with to, um, to find things out about that artwork.
Yeah, Sam Hyten, the Ironton Alive, be the person to contact.
Do you have a number or a email?
I will get that to you.
Thank you, Sam. Chris, Chris, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, the first one is, is I guess it's been released that, um, the roundabout project blueprints or whatever has been released. I've gotten a few, um, messages and I've seen a, a lot of comments about this. Now, what I'd like to say is that I've, first thing is that Ironton City Council has, has done nothing with this project. Um, we're really not involved with anything at this point. I would like to, um, I would like to put on record some information about the roundabout project on, uh, the off-ramp, on and off ramps on ninety-three, uh, where it meets fifty-two. Um, the High Department of Transportation announced a construction project targeted at improving safety. This location has been on ODOT's radar for a while, said Matt McGuire, a public, uh, information officer at, for ODOT. In two thousand nineteen, when Governor Mike DeWine listed the intersection, two thousand nineteen governor's top safety location list. That allowed us to put a little more focus on that. During a four-year period, more than sixty crashes occurred. Seventy-three percent of those crashes were rear-end collisions and another thirty-three percent were, uh, injury-related collisions. McGuire said with the high number of crashes in that area, the best long-term solution is to convert two signalized intersections to a single lane roundabout. Roundabouts, I'm sorry. Uh, it's an effort that would reduce injury crashes by up to seventy-one percent. And property damage crashes by up to twenty-six percent, according to ODOT. ODOT will hold a virtual public meeting to hear concerns and feedback from drivers who travel through the area on February ninth. We're looking at the whole US fifty-two corridor in this meeting. We hope to get any information we can, says Matt Selhorst, a transportation planner. We've collected a lot, a lot of data and analysis, but now we're looking at trying to make an effort. Make a lot of improvements to address the problems, safety issues, the congestion and backup issues. We want to hear input from the public. Uh, um, construction for the project is set to begin in the spring of. Uh, um, construction for the project is set to begin in the spring of twenty-twenty-two. Now, with that being said, um, I'd like to say that, you know, this is a state route, um, and this wasn't a decision made by council. Um, I, and personally, I, you know, that looks like that the state, uh, Department of Transportation has put a lot of thought into this and, and have studied these intersections a lot, um, so, you know, I, there's a lot of negative feedback, but I think if, if the people that are worried would attend this, um, virtual meeting on February the ninth, um, they could hear and maybe voice some of their concerns, but also hear a lot of information that may, may make them feel more comfortable, um, in regards to their safety. So I, I just wanted to ma, put that on record, um, and, and invite anybody that, that's watching this to, to attend that virtual meeting. Um, like I have two other things.
Let me, let me piggyback on that before you, before you get to here.
Okay, go ahead.
There's five nine two five eight five five two nine five. Pardon, I'm sorry, eight five five nine two five two eight zero one, meeting code eight two oh five. Or you can join online at HTTPS colon backslash backslash publicinput.com backslash capital P eight one six two. That's all, I just wanted to piggyback.
Repeat that phone number before you drive in and catch that phone number.
Phone number was eight five five nine two five two eight zero one, meeting code number eight two oh five.
I've got a question for you, Chris.
Yep.
Um, you said you've had feedback and been reading different people's thoughts on it, especially negative or positive?
Well, I will say this, Bob, um, a lot of people that has, has traveled and, and for business purposes or whatever purposes, um, a lot of people that seem to, to work or visit places with roundabouts seemed really positive about it. Um, and I, and I don't, and watch, I can't engage everybody, but I don't know that the people that are negative about it really have had to use roundabouts. Um, now I did hear a couple of people say that the, the South Point Roundabout, you know, they maybe had some problems with that, but I've, I've actually, um, it was about this time last year, um, traveled up there, you know, multiple nights for basketball. And yeah, I didn't have any problems with the roundabout, um, on the solid road, fifty-two roundabout, um, you know. I don't know if it's more of this is new, I don't want it, or if people have had trouble, you know, navigating roundabouts. But the people that have had experiences with roundabouts, more often than not, were, were the positive feedback.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Chris, uh, but the, the architectural rendering that I saw, I think there were actually two roundabouts. One at each, um, each section of the ramp, the on and off ramps.
It, it would be the, it would be, yes, it would be that loop right there, that's what I like to call them. It would be the one that leads you directly to Park Avenue and the one, um, so the, yes, that basically the eastbound and the westbound, um, leading to and off of, uh, Park Avenue or ninety-three. So yes, there, there would be two roundabouts right there.
Chris, you can get to your last two things in just a second. I got one more question for you, are you planning on attending that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be there.
If you, if you don't mind, would you ask on behalf of, of this body, um, how they plan on addressing stormwater runoff from, from those?
Yeah, so, uh, that's, that's, uh, that's already been, I've been in the discussions with, um, Matt Selhorst, Ralph Klein, um, ODOT, kind of, uh, everyone that's involved with this and Kevin was aware of it as well, there is, there definitely going to have to be some type of, that, that's been talked about, but you can bring it up.
Okay, thank you. All right, Chris.
Good question, Greg.
Of course, we've, we've discussed things like, uh, retention fountain in the middle of it, many different options, there's been tossed around for that.
Go ahead, Chris.
We're good on that issue?
Yep.
I will, I will remember to ask that, mayor seems to have a good grasp on that, but I still will bring that on behalf of council. Um, the next one is, and I, I'm not sure, I just actually drove by this, but I had somebody mention, um, the Jefferson Street, I guess going uh, towards the hill, I don't know if that'd be, be either east or north. Um, but once you get off the bridge, that the right lane is, but once you get off the bridge coming into Ironton, um, the right lane is only, is not only the right turning lane, but it's also the straightaway lane. Um, there's been, you know, I've, I've heard a couple, I mean, this isn't overwhelmingly, but a couple of people complained that, and they said that, uh, that right lane should be right turn only and the left lane should be the straight ahead lane and the left turn lane. Now, I don't know how feasible that is because, um, I just actually went through there, uh, about forty-five minutes ago. And, um, I, I, I'm not positive, but that is something that somebody brought up to me, I don't know if anybody else has heard that. Um, but it does seem to jam traffic up there when somebody is going straight ahead and you have everybody else wanting to turn right. That's, I just want.
I've talked with Mike Pemberton about it many times, it was something that ODOT did when they put the bridge and everything in. Um, how we have to go about doing that, I think has to go through them.
That's kind of, that's kind of the answer I've given.
It, it, it's because, you know, the bridge is theirs, but really the streets are ours and the light signals and stuff, but so it is. But it definitely causes backup, I've been part of that, trying to turn left on Jefferson coming down second and it's so backed up, I can't go left and I miss the light and have to sit there three times. I, I get it.
I just, I, I've had a couple of questions about that, I don't want to follow up on that, so I appreciate that answer. And like I said, that's kind of the answer I've given them, it's tricky situation with ODOT and the city, so maybe that, maybe, that may be something, which I don't want to waste everybody's time at that meeting, but that may be something, I may be able to follow up along with somebody on February ninth. Um, last thing I want to say, which Mike, uh, mentioned this, is I've had a lot of positive feedback on the construction on the Brumberg Building and, um, the old Tim's, uh, news building. Uh, people were excited, I've had multiple, uh, multiple people mentioned that they're excited to see what's going to go in there. Um, I've given them not a lot of information because I, I don't personally know myself what is going on in Tim's, uh, news, but have kind of described what the Brumberg Building um, is looking like, but there's, I've had a lot of positive, uh, comments on the construction going on, uh, there. Uh, I'm good.
Their audience participation? Mayor, do you want to address council?
I'm gonna allow, Joe, I have Joe Sokol and Scott Mason from ABM here to give you guys an, uh, update on the project they are working on with the city.
Uh, thanks Mayor Cramblett, um, uh, President Harvey council members, um, I was, uh, gonna share my screen here really quickly. And, um, I had a, let's see here. All right, I think everyone can see my screen right now.
Yes.
Okay. Um, let me see if I can make this into presentation mode. All right, so, um, thanks for the time, Mayor Cramblett, appreciate you, um, allowing us to probably take ten minutes of your time here. Um, feel free to, um, ask any questions you'd like, um, you can interrupt me or, um, if you want to wait till the end, that's fine too. Uh, we've been, we've been sending everybody, you know, weekly email updates as far as what's going on, um, you know, when we're in the buildings, what we're doing, um, you know, week to week, when we've been meeting with administration and just trying to keep you in the loop with everything. Um, and, and we thought today we'd show you, you know, a little bit of how the program's shaping up. So, you know, those emails were more so of what we're doing on site, letting you know we're, we're still developing the program. But, uh, you know, we wanted to let you know kind of what it's looking like and hold on here, there we go. All right, so, um, I think I've shared this before, but, uh, just to kind of get us to, uh, where we are today, um, we've been in front of council a number of times, kind of sharing the program before we started developing everything. And, um, you know, that'll eventually lead us to what we call our investment-grade audit, um, IGA. And that's where we're at today, we're, we're in and around the buildings, we're talking to a lot of, uh, personnel at the city. And we're expecting about a month left of that as far as, uh, being able to identify everything as far as what the, uh, guaranteed savings are going to be, all the different funding sources, and then the final pricing so that, uh, the city can make a, um, you know, an educated decision on, you know, what scope items to include. Um, that's a, you know, a, a decision, once you have that information, um, the city can make that. And then depending on what scope is selected, um, you know, that dictates the amount of financing. There's a, a, a number of different options that you have there. Um, we're starting the discussions with, uh, with John on Monday, just giving him some information, but ultimately that's a, um, a city decision. Um, so we'll be, uh, obviously working directly with the Finance Department there, um, and Mayor Cramblett. And then, um, you know, we eventually get to the point, these, these aren't hard dates, but just trying to give you an idea of what the timeframe is. Um, you know, eventually come to, to council for voting and approval and, you know, what, what we'd like to do is kind of keep you along with us the whole way that we have these things going on from, um, today with this update, um, you know, through to the point where we bring a program in front of council, um, for your approval, so, um, you know, we'll, I'll, I'll, I'll kind of lean on Mayor Cramblett and, um, you know, I'd, I'd love to continue to give you these updates and kind of see how the program develops, but, um, just got a couple of other things, and this is just kind of a refresher. Um, IGA, the investment-grade audit, that's the study we're doing right now. Um, you know, we've done a lot with the utility bills and that's, you know, the gas, the Columbia Gas AEP bills. Um, and that's identifying, you know, how much energy savings, um, can we realize through a program like this? And we've done walkthroughs, interviews, which is really talking to the people who are in and out of the buildings all day and, um, you know, operating those buildings. Um, so really identifying what the, what's the energy saving, what can that be? And then, um, also operational savings, so there's a couple of different areas as far as operational savings are concerned. Um, we've went through the past two years of expenditures and trying to, uh, figure out exactly, you know, what could be impacted based on what's currently being spent and, um, by implementing some, some improvements and what those improvements are. What are some expenses that, you know, you could, you could expect to avoid, um, in the future by moving, uh, moving forward with some new systems? Um, and, and ultimately what we're doing here is, is giving you a capital improvement program for your facilities. And that's where the, the asset grading, this, uh, pie chart on the bottom right here, um, you know, we're going to give you a, a complete breakdown of all the equipment and what, what the life expectancy is of those pieces of equipment. So the goal of the program really being, um, you know, you have a detailed capital plan of what some of these, um, these assets in your buildings and, and, you know, the, the expense of running your buildings, you know, what, um, wh- when you can expect those to, to reach their end of life expectancy. And we're trying to avoid unexpected expenses here and utilizing funds that are currently in the budget, um, to address some of these needs that are, that are towards their end of life expectancy. So that's really what we're developing now is to be able to get you all that information so that you can make a final decision. Um, and, and you know, that final decision is based off of what the savings or funding for the program is. Um, and, and ultimately, we're going to be able to deliver you guaranteed pricing. So we're, we're doing all of the engineering on the front end, um, you know, at, at, um, kind of ABM's risk so that we can show you, you know, hey, here's what a guaranteed price is, it, there's, it's a no-change order program. Um, and we want to make sure that the, the savings, um, you know, funds the, the program as a whole. So trying to get everything done with the current dollars that are being spent, um, you know, how can we get as much done as we can without, without increasing taxes or increasing what's currently being spent in the budget right now on, on that, you know, area of, um, of the budget? So, um, that's kind of what we've been doing and, and, and some of our findings, um, you know, it's a, there's, there's aging infrastructure and that's, you know, on the HVAC side, um, beyond ASRAE standards, which is a, an association of heating and, and cooling engineers. And that's just to kind of set standards as far as what the life expectancy of equipment can be. So identifying what the, that life expectancy is for, um, the equipment in your facilities. And, um, you know, as far as those are concerned with controls, um, controls are an area where there can be, um, a lot of savings. Um, making sure that the equipment's operating when it should be, off when it should be. Um, and there's a need throughout the building, so we have, um, some costs and savings associated with those items as well. Um, lighting is a, is an area of opportunity as well, there's a lot of savings that, um, can be found in lighting and we're finalizing that currently. And then, um, upgrades to, to building envelope, which if you, um, as far as our building envelope assessment, we'll, we'll get to the point where you look at, you know, doors, windows, um, joints between the roof and the, and the wall, you know, it will take infrared, um, infrared pictures to see exactly, you know, is there a lot of infiltration? You know, when you're trying to keep the building warm, is there cold air coming in? And, um, you know, how do we seal up those buildings to get them to the point where, um, you know, they're as close to new as possible? So, um, that's all, you know, um, something that we're going to be developing in our, in our investment-grade audit. And we'll have, uh, you know, an assessment as far as the windows, the roof is concerned. An option, um, depending on the condition of those, um, those assets as far as an option to, to replace if it makes sense. And that's all dictated by, uh, the savings opportunities, energy, operational. Um, we've looked at the, the current indebtedness and talking with John a lot, um, as far as the borrowing options are concerned to, to, to finance this, this is something, um, you, you have a, a, a number of options and, and we need to make sure it fits within the parameters. Um, I think you were talking about it in your Finance Committee meeting today. Um, but, but ultimately, again, you know, we, we want to give you an asset plan, um, without all those asset grading so that the things that aren't included in the program, you can know when those expected, uh, those expenses, um, can be expected as far as the life expectancy for, um, for some of those assets, and that's what we're going to be delivering to you. And, um, that's ultimately what decides the program, the, the funding available, um, the, the age of the equipment, you know, what can be funded? And then, um, really looking at as far as, you know, a plan that sets you up for the future, um, to eliminate some unexpected expenses. Now, this is, um, this is the, the project, uh, you know, from the financial side, this is funding, this is, this is not a cost of the program. Um, you know, all of the different funding sources, just looking, um, at the general fund and the water treatment plant. Um, we started to look at the wastewater plant and there's obviously a longer-term plan there with, with IBI and the long-term study that you need to do, so, you know, knowing that there still needs to be decisions made over there. Um, it didn't make sense to, to look at that just yet, that's something that we're, we're more than willing to do. Um, after that study and you kind of dictate what you want to do with your wastewater treatment plant. Um, but, but when a plan's kind of being developed there, um, you know, we, we wouldn't recommend making an investment in, in, in that facility um, at this time. So specifically looking at items in the general fund and, and the water treatment plant, so, um, the city building, garage, um, uh, fire department, um, and the waste, or, um, I'm sorry, the water treatment plant. Um, there's about nine million dollars in funding between those, that, that enterprise fund and the general fund. Um, and that's compromised of, of energy savings, various operational savings. We've met with, um, the mayor and, and John Ehlum to, to dig into, and we have some further, um, uh, digging to do to, to fine-tune that number, um, and, uh, but the, the point kind of being there is that, um, there's, there's plenty of funding for the, the improvements that are, um, that are needed here as far as the ones that are towards their end of life expectancy. So it, it's looking like a good program, we're, we're excited about it, we're, we're happy that, um, you know, we're happy to be involved and it's, it's nice when you get further down the road to see a program like this come to fruition. So we're, we're excited to share some more details as soon as we, we have those, um, We have those, um, ready to go for you, but, um, you know, we'll be, we'll be working with, um, John and, um, everyone in the finance department. And I know Missy and, um, uh, the ladies in the finance department have helped us a lot with getting some, um, utility data. And, 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 and those sort of things, so, um, really appreciate their help. And, um, and, uh, on Monday, we're, we're meeting with John to, um, just start the discussion as far as financing options and, and what's. Um, you know, what the options are for the city, but, um, that is, that is about it on the financial side and just our, our next steps. Um, you know, timeline for the investment grade audit completion, that's, that's IGA, um. Sometimes put a lot of acronyms on there, but investment grade audit IGA, um, you know, we want to get to the point where we're gonna do a, a workshop. As far as the findings are concerned with administration to, um, decide what's gonna be best to fit into the program and that's really co-authored. Um, between the city and ABM and then, um, it gets into finalizing the, um, financial arrangements and the, the contract. And, um, we'd like to take you all along with us, um, you know, as that gets finalized and, um, come back to you for, for review and approval. And then, um, it just comes down to the fun stuff, which is implementation and project management. Um, but, but that's all I have for you right now. Um, just wanted to give you a quick update of how it's looking and, um, and, and we'll be back with. With more updates, but, um, I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sorry, Chris, I was muted. Chris?
Uh, not, not necessarily a question, uh, more of, uh, just a comment for Joe. Um, Joe, one thing that I, I am impressed with so far is your guys' weekly updates. Um, it keeps us, you know, it, it keeps me, yeah, I look forward to those e- every week. I just wanna, I want to show appreciation, um, of the transparency that you guys are showing, um, weekly. So that, that's, you know, a, a positive that I, and I look forward to it every week and, you know, seeing, seeing the. The progress that you guys are making.
I appreciate that.
Joe, how close are, are, are you two following your schedule there as far as wrapping up your audit into February? And then, um, council action in March and so forth. Are you pretty on target with that?
Yeah, yeah, right now we're right on target, um, you know, along with your, your weekly updates, we hold, um, you know, I hold weekly. Internal updates with my team and, uh, you know, those, those internal meetings are all around, you know, what, what items do we need to hit? By what deadline to hit that exact solution timeline that I detail out for you? And, um, I actually had that call this morning and, and we're right on schedule right now. Um, that's not to say that something will come up that pushes us back a little bit, but, um, yeah, we're right on target and, and things are going. Um, you know, all things considered, things are going pretty smooth. Um, we, we haven't had too big of a delay yet and, um, we're right on target there.
All right, and, uh, what time are you gonna be in the finance department on Monday?
Um, I will be there. I believe it's, I believe it's in the afternoon.
Said two, which Nate, we have the other thing.
I didn't know, I didn't know if I'd be able to cut loose, cause I.
It'd be the same for me. Yeah, I might try to as well.
And, and if not, um, you know, I, and, and, um, council member Klein, I, I talked to Mayor Cramblet. And, um, you know, just gonna, kind of beginning the conversation with John, this is, this is by no means a, a one meeting, um, a one meeting thing. So I think, uh, we'll be, we'll be reviewing that information. I was planning on reviewing it with Mayor Cramblet, um, you know, ha- happy to, you know. Set a follow-up meeting with, with anyone that would, would like and, um, I'll, I'll leave that to the mayor to schedule and I'll, I'll work with him as far as doing that. If that's a, you know, but more than happy to have anyone involved.
Thank you.
Mayor, anything else?
No, that's all.
Thank you, Joe.
Appreciate you having me.
Any other audience participation before we move on? Communications are next. On our agenda, we have none. Reports, we have none. Ordinances, if the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-one oh-two, first reading by title only.
Authorizing and directing the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Ironton, an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement. Between the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Bob?
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that ordinance twenty-one oh-two was favorably recommended by the finance committee. Meeting we have prior to the council meeting, and I'd like to go on to, uh, make a motion, we give twenty-one oh-two, second, third reading. By title only.
Second.
I'll second it.
I heard Mike first, Beth. Roll call, please.
Larry.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk. Klein.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Rist.
Hi.
The clerk could please give ordinance twenty-one oh-two, second and third reading by title only.
Authorizing and directing the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Ironton, an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement between the Fraternal Order of Police. Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and declaring an emergency, second reading. Authorizing and directing the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Ironton, an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement. Between the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-one oh-two.
I'll second it.
Beth? Any discussion? Call, please.
Larry.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Pierce. Pierce.
Hi.
Rist.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-one oh-two is adopted. Next, we have resolutions and there are none and. Onto miscellaneous reminder, um, because Beth wasn't on here yet and Mr. Haney joined us. Um, right in the middle of a budget workshop, uh, set, or February sixth. The day after Mr. Hawk's birthday, uh, nine AM, location yet to be determined. They're miscellaneous.
I do have one question, um, just quickly, um, and this may, mayor may be able to answer this. Um, right off the bat, uh, mayor, ha- have we, has there been any discussion about the spray in liner? For the new trucks that we just purchased?
On the beds?
Yeah, I had talked to, to Brett Thomas about that and I, we both thought it'd be a good idea just to extend the, the life of the, the truck and the bed. Um, any discussion? Has he asked you about that?
Maybe.
Um, I don't know if it'd be something council would have to do or not, but I don't think it would, um, but if it does, I don't know that. Would anybody have any, um, opposition towards getting the spray in liner to protect the beds of the. Uh, new trucks that we bought for the.
I think that'd be fine to do that.
If you really want to extend the life, uh, get the spray on undercoating.
All right. Greg?
Doggone.
Nate, I can't see you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, I just can't see you. Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, accept file and make part of the minutes, the December twenty-twenty financials.
I'll second that motion.
Thanks, Bob. Roll call, please.
Larry.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein. Klein.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Rist.
Bye.
I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session to discuss, uh, personnel with no action to follow.
You want in that?
Uh, it'd be just council and mayor.
I'll second.
No action to follow, which means, um, our media friends don't have to worry about rejoining the meeting. Chris, was that you, the second?
Yep.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Larry.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Hawk.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Rist.
Hi.
You all, we are adjourned unless you are councilor or mayor.